Notes hereby given that a regular meeting of the town of Laguna Vista Texts will be held Tuesday the fourteenth of April twenty twenty five at six P M. At the South Texas Department Center Texas one hundred Laguna Vista Text seven eight by seven eight. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Texas five five one point one two seven, one or more members of town council may attend if this may be a video conference in form, the town council will be physically present at the above meeting location. The following items will be discussed. Call and order at six o'clock, invocation and pledge. The board is called Church of Christ, who's also the treasurer of the L B R A. He's also been the president, vice president, everything else in the L B R A. So thank you, Rusty. Yes.
Our most gracious, loving, and heavenly Father, we are just so thankful for this day that you have blessed us with. We're just so thankful for you being our God. Thank you for loving us. Thank you for the way you care for us, the way you provide for us. And at this time, Lord, we just ask a special prayer that you be with our city. We pray that you be with our leaders. We pray that you give them the wisdom and the knowledge that they need to make the best decisions for our town. And we just pray that you watch over them and keep them, look over them at all times. Lord, most of all, we just thank you for Jesus, for the life that he lived, the sacrifice that he gave for each and every one of us. Again, thank you for loving us. It's in Jesus' name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, infinite, endless. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under our one individual.
Thank you, Rusty. Roll call.
Councilmember Dr. Romano.
Here.
Mrs. Fowler. Mrs. Fitch.
Yes.
Mr. Pernicious.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mayor Carter.
Here. Item four, open forum. The public is allowed three minutes per person to address the council on any topic that will be not discussed from a formal action taken during this agenda item. Speaker must identify themselves before speaking in speaker request form as you present to the city secretary prior to the meeting. Okay, Rusty, Jennifer Valdez.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. Good evening, everyone. I want to take a moment to sincerely thank our town council for bringing the TURS opportunity to Laguna Vista. This is such a meaningful step forward for our small town, one that allows us to reinvest in ourselves by improving infrastructure, supporting local businesses, and encouraging thoughtful growth that benefits our residents and families. As a resident, a parent, and someone who truly loves this town, it's inspiring to see leadership focused on progress that supports families, small businesses, and future generations. It's exciting to watch our community move forward in a way that keeps Laguna Vista strong while preserving the charm and character that make it so special. For a town like ours, I truly believe this is a smart and sustainable step toward long-term success. Thank you for believing in our potential and for doing your part to help shape a brighter future for all of us here in Laguna Vista. Thank you.
Next we have Andrew Gonzalez.
Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've been in Laguna Vista my entire life, so I've had the opportunity to watch the town grow and change. And I'd like to offer my support for the T I R D project and improvements that are on table this evening. It's important that our town grows and to grow in the right way. South Texas is a place where people love to be outdoors. I work at a golf course where it's a hundred degrees or thirty degrees. You got people out there playing. If they're not playing, they're fishing, riding bikes, walking, all that good stuff. So, like I said, people who grew up here will love to hear a special outdoor environment of South Texas. I support the T I R D because it creates more opportunity to enjoy the outdoors, to taste what's naturally good about Laguna Vista, and find new opportunities. Open sidewalks, walking trails, parks, pavilions, lakes, outdoor living spaces. I support it because it supports quality of life. Finally, I support it because I've become known to passion for developing the project. When the golf course was mirrored in foreclosure, Laguna Vista residents would pull their supports and save it from outside as residents. The T I R D has been developed by people who worked and lived here. I watched them effectively in the golf course. I've seen them put countless hours into improving the community. They are committed to growing things the right way with effort and excellence. I'm convinced they put the same energy and resources into this project. I support it. I support the continued growth in outdoor space. I've always loved to be a part of this town. I know this project is something that the residents will be proud to see in the years ahead. Thank you.
Next we have Adam LaLanne.
I might keep it short, but I just want to thank the city council for the sixth, this is the sixth meeting that we've had on this. We've been meeting for months, and I came to you guys with a dream, and you guys were gracious enough to listen. So this is just my opportunity to say thank you. And sitting on a board myself, I know it's hard to say yes. It's hard to say yes to all the things you want to do in a city. Tonight's night, you can say yes. You can say yes to a walking trail. You can say yes to a dog park. You can say yes to some of those big dreams, and you can say yes to new tax revenues and growth in a responsible way. So I'm happy to be able to bring that opportunity to you guys. I really appreciate the support of everybody here tonight as well to speak in favor of this. So leave it in your hands, but thank you so far for your consideration.
Next, item five, consideration of possible action to approve the following minutes September ninth twenty five, regular council meeting minutes.
I have one correction on the September ninth under number six, council member Hernandez was locked off.
We're motion.
I make a motion to approve the minimum minutes for September the ninth twenty five.
Most we have councilman France, second by councilman Hernandez to approve September ninth twenty five, regular council meeting minutes.
Councilmember Dr. Romano.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitch.
Yes.
Councilmember Pernicious.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. We also have September twenty four twenty twenty five, special council meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for September twenty five.
So when you put councilman France, again, the councilman Hernandez to approve September twenty four twenty five, special council meeting minutes.
Councilmember Dr. Romano.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitch.
Yes.
Councilmember Pernicious.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. Item six, ordinance twenty five dash oh seven, consideration of possible action on second and final reading of ordinance twenty five dash oh seven in order to town council of the town of Laguna Vista Texas approving and adopting bylaws of the board of directors of reinvestment zone number one. The town of Laguna Vista Texas, the zone, approving the final project and financing plan for the zone, establishing certain economic development programs for the zone, approving a tax increment reinvestment zone, TURS, agreement between the town and Galla Development LLC, authorizing and directing the execution of the TURS agreement, approving an administrator for the zone, and authorizing the execution of an administrative services agreement for the zone, providing a separability clause, and providing an effective date. Alan.
Mayor, this is the second reading of the ordinance that approves the initial action of the TURS board to adopt these bylaws that approve the administrative agreement. I know that the council has been working with developers to put a lot of these documents together here, and they've been able to answer any final questions that the council may have before we take the final action that approves that aspect of the project.
Corey would like to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Corey Admire. Sure. My name is Corey Admire. I'm with Jupiter P L C. I'm an attorney, and I specialize in some economic development tools that we utilize throughout the state of Texas, including the tax increment reinvestment zone financing, which is what the council created the zone and has previously created it. And this action item is just part of the statutory requirements as well as approving the agreement that goes along with that. So I'm happy to give an overview or if you have.
We should give a quick overview.
Sure, sure. All right. So tax increment reinvestment zone. So the council has designated an area within the zone. It's drawing a circle around this. And what that does is it's going to freeze the tax base. So the taxes that the city is already collecting, the city will continue to collect a hundred percent of those taxes. But then, as the developer invests dollars in the community and builds infrastructure, develops some property, builds more homes, as that tax base increases, a portion of that increase is going to be utilized to go back into the project. So it can be used to do additional projects like the amenities, reimburse the developer. So really, it's an opportunity for the town to see some growth and some infrastructure and improvements of the town that wouldn't otherwise be done either through private development or just through tax dollars. So the developer team will invest, take all the upfront risks. They have to build it, and they have to increase the value, or there's nothing for them to get reimbursed from, if that makes sense. And so they're splitting these dollars with the town. So the town is going to also see the benefit. But for the term of the zone, some of those dollars will go back into the project. And then once the term, the zone is done, the town then keeps all of that tax income, all of that increased tax value. So that's the concept. It's used frequently throughout the state and all over the nation. This is one of those tools where it is not costing the citizens anything. You, as homeowners and landowners in the city, will pay the same taxes the same amount of what the city will continue to, as I said, keep everything that it's keeping today. This is just encouraging private investment in a project that otherwise would likely be much slower to come to this to the town.
Any questions?
No.
I'm sorry.
You're not recognized by the board. Thank you so much.
Okay.
More different questions. General motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty five oh seven.
I'll second that motion.
Most we have councilmember Dr. Romero, second by councilmember Perez to approve ordinance twenty five dash oh seven.
Councilmember Dr. Romano.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitch.
Yes.
Councilmember Pernicious.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have to recuse myself because I follow the proper paperwork with the city secretary.
Mayor, since the, that's the language on the agenda that you read is the full text of the ordinance, there's no need to reread it. So we're done.
Very good. Well, congratulations.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Good. There any bankers in here? Thank you guys.
Would you like us to step out and let you guys?
Whatever you guys want to do. Thank you guys for investing in our town. Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to step out and let you guys do your thing.
Okay, we're gonna keep going now, guys.
Thank you. Item seven, presentation of monthly financial reports for the period ending August and September twenty twenty five. Rosio.
May you welcome the mayor and councilmember.
Excuse me.
I did notice down here on that page that the August number, and I'm only presenting August.
Okay.
We do have it on the screen. I was for a request from last meeting. We'll summarize. If you have any questions, you want to wait, go ahead and please cover it. On fund balance, I did a summary combination of regular general fund balance under restricted, general fund balance beginning with an eight hundred and one thousand sixty nine dollars, but then changed during the month. Year to date, total fund balance one point two seven six, and then in addition with the restricted of eight hundred eighty three thousand twenty nine. We have a block of thirty first, three point one five nine four million sixty three. On the following pages, you have the detail. This is the deeper general fund, and you have all the line items, including the tax accounts receivable. Down at the bottom, you see again the one point two seven six, and then on the following page, you have the restricted. If there's no questions, then we have the payment statement. In your packets, we do have all the other subaccounts for your review. Again, I'm focusing on the double file. Also, on this presentation, I was, from one of the requests also, with presumptuous add it. So we hid your confusion by adding that. So total revenues. Three million two hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eighty two. Year to date, which is already exceeding our budget overall. And then on the next three pages, you have a total of expenditures. And you do have the details for line item. And then on the third page, you have your total. Of one, I'm sorry, two point seven three six, zero seventy seven, twelve thirty eight. And then that gives an ending of a one hundred and seventy five thousand two hundred and five, which is what we saw right now, the net change of the fund out. In addition to that, you have the check registers for both general fund and the credit card statement. Do you have any questions? Again, in your packets, you do have all the other subaccounts.
Anybody have any questions? No. Great. Moving on, item eight, especially possible action to approve retro proclamation occurring October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. That's National First Responders Day in the town of Laguna Vista. National First Responders Day, where as first responders, both men and women, career and volunteer, from nine eleven dispatchers, law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, search and rescue teams, rescue pilots and divers, emergency management professionals, and members of other organizations in the public safety sector come together to protect and aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas first responders risk their life and safety every day in the performance of their duties to protect our citizens. And whereas, at a moment's notice, first responders are equipped to respond to dangerous and unnerving situations that threaten our common life. And whereas, first responders must be ready to provide life-saving services to the people of the town of Laguna Vista twenty four hours a day, seven days a week throughout the year. And whereas, first responders undergo significant education, specialized training, and personnel, and personal sacrifice to contribute their excellent and necessary skills for the public good. And whereas, we recognize the integral role first responders play in our communities and the benefits derived from their hard work, commitment, sacrifice, and unhesitating dedication. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mike Carter, do hereby proclaim October twenty 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 five as National First Responders Day in the town of Laguna Vista, and I call this observance the attachment to our citizens. Thank you, guys. With that, you guys, it'd be.
Let's get everybody here. These first responders, come on up.
There's not forgetting each of the guys that are running in, but you guys are running out. So.
Mayor, did you want to hold this, or did you want? Thank you.
We, thank you. Item nine, especially possible action to approve proclamation, the National Friends of the Library Week, October nineteenth to October twenty twenty five in the town of Laguna Vista. National Friends of Libraries, proclamation. Whereas, the Friends of the Laguna Vista Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment to support children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. Whereas, the work of the Friends of the Laguna Vista Library highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. Whereas, the Friends of the Laguna Vista Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers, advisory, and children's services. Whereas, the Friends of the Laguna Vista Library gift for their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, it is to be resolved, the town of Laguna Vista proclaimed October nineteenth to the twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, as National Friends of the Library Week in Laguna Vista, Texas. And it urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them all to do, to make our library the community so much better. Thank you, guys.
We have our president and our board of directors here, Ms. Melissa Moore. And we have Mr. Bradley. Our fundraising director. I am secretary and our treasurer.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor, I should have jumped in earlier. We have those on the agenda as national proclamation. Okay, so can we go a little bit?
I make a motion, a members and proclamation declaring October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five as National First Responders Day in the town of Laguna Vista.
Most we have councilman France, second by councilman Hernandez to approve October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five as National First Responders Day in the town of Laguna Vista.
Councilmember Dr. Romano.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitch.
Yes.
Councilmember Pernicious.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. Item nine, do I have a motion for that? I'll make a motion to approve October nineteenth to October twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, the National Friends of the Library Week in the town of Laguna Vista.
I'll say Andrew.
Presented by Mayor Carter, presented by councilmember Perez to approve the National Friends of the Library Week, October nineteenth to twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Councilmember Dr. Romano.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitch.
Yes.
Councilmember Pernicious.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, guys, again, for the Friends of the Library. You guys do an amazing job over there. Item ten, discussion of possible action on stage of the Christmas event.
Yes, members of the council, very, item very routine, but the reason for the change is so that the event can coincide with the annual value of the Christmas tree at Roll Off Park. We recommend that that change to December fourth.
Questions?
I make a motion that we schedule the Christmas event for December the fourth, changing it from December the fourth.
You second that? Councilmember, most we have councilman Bryan, seconded by councilmember Hernandez to approve the date for the Christmas event to be December fourth, twenty twenty five.
Councilmember Dr. Romano.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitch.
Yes.
Councilmember Pernicious.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. Hope you all can come to our Christmas event. Super fun. So. Item eleven, especially possible action on approval of agreement for provision of Zumba classes.
Members of the council, you have the proposal in your packet. Management has had an opportunity to review it, and we find that it is a very good activity that we can achieve. Don't be not permitted to have it. And the budget that we're asking for, which would be through a contract basis, is a four thousand fifty dollars. And looking at the different line items from contractual services throughout the budget, this would not be a proper meeting that amount. So staff recommends that.
Just wanted to recognize that we understand that the funding was taken away, and we're going to take that over. Okay? And however long I'm able to do it, I'm going to make sure that those super classes are funded and available to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Hernandez, seconded by Councilmember Perez to approve the agreement for provision of Zumba classes.
All right. Councilmember Dr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Thank you. Item twelve, especially possible action to improve Cameron County's use of the Laguna Vista City Hall as an election site for the upcoming general and special election. Lydia, oh, I think you were going to leave, but quickly, of course, yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to item twelve, discussion of possible action to approve Cameron County's use of Laguna Vista City Hall as an election site for the upcoming general and special elections. Lydia?
Mayor, members of the council, Cameron County Elections Office has requested to use our town hall for their elections. Uh, there are this request in one day, uh, which would be to sit on a writ of order. If we, uh, if you move motion to approve, then we would go ahead and let them know of the approval and they would come in and utilize the facility, the boardroom, uh, for that day.
I make a motion to approve Cameron County Elections using City Hall on November the fourth, twenty twenty-five for election day.
I'll second that. Motion by Councilor Brian, seconded by Mayor Carter to approve Cameron County's use of the Laguna Vista City Hall as an election site for the upcoming general and special election for November fourth.
Councilmember Dr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item thirteen, discussion of possible action on a service agreement between Los Presenos Ambulance Service Inc. and the town of Laguna Vista. Keith Waters?
Chief, no worries, Laguna Vista Fire. So this contract is the exact same contract as we had last year with the exact same services and no raises and, and fees. Uh, I can elaborate how fantastic the service has been working out for us. Uh, I've expressed my sentiment to, to several people, but it's, it's working amazingly. And I, I'm hoping that everybody that needs the service has benefited from the service and the service has been, bar none, fantastic. Is it?
Perfect. Thank you. I, I just want to commend Keith Waters on, on his running of the, uh, the Volunteer Guard Department and also the EMS and, and keeping this relationship with Los Presenos so tight because it's so important for our town there. We have saved people's lives because of this, and so I just want to thank you. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the, uh, service between Los Presenos Ambulance Service Inc. and the town of Laguna Vista.
I'll second it.
Most of you, Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilor Brian to approve the service view from Los Presenos Ambulance Service Inc. and the town of Laguna Vista.
Councilmember Dr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Discussion of possible action to approve Professional Technologies International Proposal on IT Infrastructure Upgrade.
Uh, member, uh, mayor and members of council, um, this is yet another step, big step for the city today in, in effort to modernize, improve our i- infrastructure in terms of, uh, IT. And because it's something that, uh, will help us in the overall of that task. And, uh, it is, uh, thirteen thousand, it will cost thirty thousand six hundred dollars, which can be afforded by the budget. Uh, again, it will be spread out to the different departments, because all the departments will benefit from this. Uh, the stack, uh, Savannah and Lydia were the ones that are mainly involved with this. If you have any questions, I'm sure that we would like to answer. Uh, the, the proposal is very extensive and it is something that we need. It's going to benefit the stream enlaving and also improving our services, uh, our services to the community. So we are recommending that this be approved.
Questions, concerns? You know we're all in need of it. Badly. There are a lot of them. Make a motion to approve the Professional Technologies International Proposal on IT Infrastructure Upgrade.
I'll second it.
Most of you, Councilmember Hernandez, seconded by Councilmember Perez to approve the, uh, Professional Technologies International Proposal on IT Infrastructure Upgrade.
Councilmember Dr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item fifty, discussion of possible action on approval of contract with professional services with Rain and Network to prepare EPA grant application.
Mayor, members, uh, as you may recall, uh, we went up with proposals, uh, so that we could, uh, find a consultant and with, uh, help us put an application together to EPA, uh, which if funded, uh, we would be able to construct an emergency center, uh, ranked actually if, if possible, right next to this, this property here. Um, and, uh, we only received one proposal. Uh, I previously recommended, uh, that this proposal be selected, which you did at the previous meeting. At this point, uh, once again, the recommendation is that they be given the contract and a copy of the contracts in your, in your, uh, packet. I believe, uh, there'd be, would be about three or four percent of the contract amount. You have any questions?
Can you expand on what these, uh, what the amount of the grant is?
That's going to depend on, uh, on actually us, uh, basically determining, which is something that Chief, uh, Waters and, and Daniel, uh, our police commander are working on, uh, coming on with, uh, exactly what would this, that they need. Uh, because both the departments would relocate over there. Uh, and then in terms of the overall center, uh, all of them be there. And we're actually going to have to go out and stake the place, determine the size to be able to quantify, uh, for a square foot or a linear feet as far as the cost of construction. Uh, and then among other things, uh, at this point, uh, the maximum grant amount would be twenty million dollars, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sure it's going to be more than the, uh, around ten or eleven, eleven million. Uh, so, but we still got the potential to ensure. Uh, I do have to add that, uh, if you get rented, there is a twenty percent logo share.
Any other questions?
And, uh, the, for this portion, it's going to be a one point five percent of grant awarding up. That's what I have to say.
I'm sorry.
It's going to be a one point five percent, uh.
Oh, yeah, on, on the grant amount, whatever.
We worked down what we, what we're trying to get done.
Okay, um, you know what? Then can, can you give us your part, can you give us a part about, uh, your, your side?
You're going to explain what this is about, like what we're trying to get done. On the fire side of it, on, on the whole project? So there's it, uh, the grant, we met with people in Kingsville to look at the grants, uh, for proposals for grants, possibilities. We looked at their building and honestly, we didn't care for it, that wouldn't really fit our needs and had a lot of wasted space. So I put some time into doing some research in other fire stations, you know, around the whole United States and looked at some diagrams. And after talking to a few members of the council, we agreed that, or I hope we agreed that this shouldn't be a project for today or tomorrow or next year, two years. This should be a five, ten, fifteen and twenty-year project because we don't get twenty million dollar grant, up to potentially twenty million dollar grants, but probably once in a lifetime. The facility that I envisioned will have sleeping quarters for fire EMS, large equipment apparatus base, um, double, too deep, you know, for, uh, two apparatus for the future, uh, during hurricane events, natural disasters, anything like that. There's a place to put all of your place cars, the boat, the fire apparatus, everything like that of, of value for the town to be placed inside of it. Uh, my envisioned building has an EOC, which could double, triple as your training center, EOC Mercy Operations Center, which is built to be fortified to withstand a, uh, hur- is hurricane rated. And it could be used for council meetings, actually, in front of it and have an audience area and audio video on. The right side of it, as you're looking forward to it, would be the two, I'm sorry, Commander Holland to design a suitable PD station.
And just so everybody has an idea of what, what we're talking about, it, we have thirteen acres to the west of this, that's adjacent to this property. And, and so that's where this would be located, so.
Hi, my name is Daniel, I'm the commander here at Laguna Vista. Uh, like Chief Waters said, we've been going to different departments, seeing what, what works for us, looking at a ten-year plan down the road, twenty years, thirty years. Eventually we'd like to have a general facility, uh, dispatch facility. Like I said, our training facility where other agencies and government actually, you know, view our town and, and, uh, and then an emergency center in case we do hit it. Where would probably be the first line where we're not as, it won't be affected as much as Port of the Bone, South Park, right? So they would end up coming over here to help us out, FEMA, you know, Texas, uh, Public, Public Safety. Um, everybody will come together here at our station, that, that's the plan down the road. Um, we're still figuring whether it's going to be a large footprint, whether it's going to be a one-story building, you know, eighteen, twenty thousand, uh, square footage, or do a multiple story, you know, two-story, uh, building where PD is on top and fire on the bottom or vice versa. Um, we're still trying to go to the stand, we're told this is a, we're going to have to sit down and, and talk with the developers and see what, what works best for us in our, in the location that we have here. Essentially, we're, we're planning for the twenty-year, thirty-year down the line. We're not going to use it right now as a, other than our department, but there's going to be some types of, of rooms. Like I said, uh, we're trying to plan for a holding cell, a saliport, an extra garage bay for our, we just got a word, uh, from ATV, the ATV for our brands. So all those, all those equipment vehicles during a hurricane or during a bad storm, we can store them in a garage. Uh, and that's, that's what we plan to, we still in the works today with Mr. Durney and the developers and hopefully the plan comes in person.
And I might add that, uh, it not only has to involve our police department, EMS department, uh, but that training, uh, center, which is really going to be a regional facility, which we work, we will work hand-in-hand specifically, especially with Cameron County. Uh, and as I said, we're very strategically located, uh, to where, uh, and we have a hurricane, we're still far enough from, from, from the island, from the port is well, where then all, everybody can come together here and, uh, and, and, and actually prepare and then deal with the storm or whatever catastrophe that we may have to face. Uh, so in, in one, on the one hand, it'll provide the facilities that this community greatly needs in terms of, especially a police department station. Uh, some of you have had the opportunity to see the little space that they have there within City Hall. Uh, if this is, it becomes reality, they'll have an adequate, very ample police department, uh, which obviously will benefit the whole community. Uh, the fire department has a larger building, but, uh, this, this facility would actually not only double the size, but it'll improve the, uh, the environments of the day and also provide even more services to the community because not only fire protection, it's administrative services. Uh, it'll have, uh, the facilities to have offices, which we do not have that at this point. So again, it, 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 it's a very big hit. It's going to take a lot of work, uh, and even if we get it, we're going to have to contribute to that cost. But in the long run, as we say, ten, fifteen years from now, uh, we're not only going to be very proud of this facility, but we're going to be very grateful of the kinds of things that will provide in terms of safety for Laguna Vista and its residents.
And then let's not forget that we have about a thousand homes in three different developments that are being planned right now. And so in the next ten years, Laguna Vista is going to grow tremendously. And we're going to need to have our infrastructure and our community, you know, our community services available and expanded to, to be able to handle that, so. So the great idea, you know, hopefully we get this grant. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the, uh, first contract, this discussion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilman Dr. O'Meara, seconded by Councilor Brian to approve contract, contract for professional services with the Rain and Network to prepare EPA's grant application.
Councilmember Dr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item sixteen, discussion of possible action on approval contract for professional services with Fulcrum Consulting Services for engineering services to the EPA grant application.
Yes, sir. Uh, again, this is a major component of the same grant that we're talking about. Uh, but this, this contract would be with the engineer, uh, that, that will work with the hand-in-hand with consulting with the city in, in from the very beginning in terms of pricing out and then, uh, the design for the facility. And, uh, again, uh, we went up for proposals, we did receive three proposals for, uh, three firms. Uh, and this is the firm that, uh, we reviewed as far as tax concern and we recommended, uh, that we selected them as a first choice. Uh, the council approved that and then the next day it's like the other contracts, which is that we have on approval contract. When, and that's, uh, a copy of that contract is, uh, video packed, video packed. And again, the piece of basically the schedule, regular piece that, uh, would be charged for this type of work, engineering work. And so once again, we, city manager recommends that the contract be awarded to all of us, engineering.
Questions?
I make a motion that we approve the contract for professional services of Fulcrum Consulting Services for exchange services for the EPA grant application.
Motion of Councilmember Brian, seconded by Councilmember Hernandez to approve Fulcrum Consulting Services for Engineering Services for the EPA Grant Application.
Councilmember Dr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item seventeen, discussion of possible action on approval contract for professional services with Fulcrum Consulting Services for drainage improvement, GLO Project twenty-four dash zero six seven dash zero zero five dash P zero, I mean, that's E one ninety-two.
Thank you, sir, council, in this case. Uh, again, uh, the city went up for proposals, received three, uh, engineering, some engineering, uh, proposals. Uh, the council, uh, approved the selection of Fulcrum again. Uh, and, uh, and we have set on with them and they, the thing with this one is that, as you may recall, it started off with another engineer, uh, and we, we weren't able to complete, or they weren't able to complete that work. Uh, so, but in terms of the P, it would be basically what had been approved before uh, by the council and JLO, the funding agency. And so this would just simply finish up the project, which would be thirty percent. And that's, uh, about thirty to thirty seventy thousand dollars, uh, for the final work that, uh, this new engineer would do. Uh, so it's a pretty standard, just to finish up the job. And so once again, after the council selected this firm, uh, management is recommending that the contract before you be approved for the.
Questions?
I have a question. When, when will this, when will Dirk's attorney come?
I have a question, when, when will this, when will dirt turn on this project, since it's approved?
I hope before Christmas.
There it is.
As you may recall, some of this work is going to be done in-house. And then some of it will be contracted out. But of course, if we don't get, the problem that's been not holding us fired is getting the engineer, because we didn't have an engineer and now we, now we do and we can move forward.
Just so everybody knows, what this is, it's mesquite, ebony, orange, palm from Taylor to hibiscus. To regrade all of their drainage ditches to improve the drains in that part of the town, so. It's about eight, $900,000 grant.
$800,000 project.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion. For the approval contract for professional services with Fulcrum Consulting Services for the Drainage Improvement GLO Project.
I'll say that. Motion made by Councilmember Cornejo, seconded by Mayor Carter, to approve the contract of services with Fulcrum Consulting Services for Drainage Improvement GLO Project.
Councilmember Dr. Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Item 18, discussion of possible action on approval. Contract for professional services with K Plus Architect for the Expansion of the Fire Station Project funded by ARPA funds.
Yeah, Mayor, council people, this one is the extension, a proposed extension to the fire station. Which will add the facilities to be able to not only house an ambulance, but additional emergency vehicles. Once again, we went out for proposals, we received two. One of them is. K Architect and the other one is Mendez. The board at a previous meeting selected actually both of them. And that management talked to both of them, basically can negotiate in terms of the fee. I've done that, I discussed with both of them and both of them have stated, have given me that, that their minimum fee is, would be 7%. So both of them would charge the same percentage of the construction amount. So based on, on the nature of the project and the knowledge by K Architect. I feel that, that they probably would do the best possible work for the city in terms of the expansion. And the expansion itself, for your information, we have to, we're going to have to redesign or rethink the, the experience before. As you may recall, it's going to be added to the building, to the site. But the thing is that the old facility has a lot of need for improvements in terms of handicap accessibility and so forth. So the only way that if we were to do it that way, then it would trigger the requirement that the city would have to upgrade that, that all of the facility. Which would then, we wouldn't have any other money to do certainly both things. And so in order to basically avoid that, is that we're going to have to add some of these, which would be now to the back of the building. And it'll be a standalone building, therefore it won't trigger the requirement to repair or upgrade the existing facility. And with the money that we have from ARPA, we should be able to do that project without any problem. If we do it in this way, so it is going to be no different from what you all have 10% of before. And again, if you have any questions or if you feel that, that since basically the fee is tied, if you feel that you would like to continue further negotiations with both of them. Although I think that's quite a slow.
Yeah.
I certainly can entertain that and follow through with that.
Everybody knows ARPA funds are COVID funds, those are the end of the COVID funds, whatever that means, so.
I'll make a motion. To approve contract professional services with K Plus Architect, extension of our station.
I'll second.
Motion of Dr. Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Perez, to approve K Plus Architect for the Expansion of the Fire Station Project funded by ARPA funds.
Councilmember Dr. Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes, and just so everybody knows, K Plus Architect is our one and only local resident over there, so.
Thank you.
Item 19, discussion of possible action on appointments to the following boards, the A with library board.
Applications. Namely, the people that are buying.
Mayor, council members, we do have four applicants for the library board, we have Ms. Olga Chat, we have Ms. Terry Nunez. We have Ms. Patricia Bradley and Ms. Lori Medei.
How many spots do we have open?
Right, right now all five spots need to be reappointed or, or applied.
And is there anybody on the board who expressed interest to be on the board again?
Yes, so if you see, we have Ms. Olga Chat, Ms. Lori Medei, that, I'm sorry, Ms. Patricia Bradley and Ms. Lori Medei that are, were currently already serving on the board.
So we have one, we still have one basis?
We still have one basis.
Any. If the council would like, we can continue advertising and seeing, especially if this is, this is another one, seeing if we get any more applications. There's no urgency.
So if we did that the same five would stay with their expired terms and wait for another, for additional applicants?
Yes, we continue to work with the group this year.
I do want to mention that if we continue with the current expired terms, there is one member that gave resign from the position, so we would still need to wait for two.
So how does it work if we just appointed up four applicants to leave the board?
We can continue advertising for that, but I.
But if you point the board on, basically, it was, yeah.
But it's just, so either one of them.
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. Terry Nunez to join the board and also Ms. Patty Bradley to join that board. I'll second that question.
Motion made by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Bryant, to approve Jerry Nunez and Patty?
Yes, Patty Bradley.
Patty Bradley.
Councilmember Dr. Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez? Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Keep that represented? Let me count in three. Very good. Item B, we vetted zone one, Board of Directors.
Mr. Cornejo, what? I'm sorry. The board, the council member Cornejo expressed to us that it's something that I don't want that.
So we'll learn some new information on it and we'll have to stay on.
You're welcome, yeah, that being, I'm sure, that being the case, we don't have a.
We don't have, we don't have any. Very good. I'd like to say some stuff, just real quick, just to clear the air on some of the items that have been floating around our town. Mainly with our, our city manager here. Our city manager was hired on March 24, 2025, at the rate that he's getting paid now. He never received a 50% increase. Okay, the way that, that budgets are looked at in the state of Texas is you look at the approved budget for the, for the past year. And you look at the approved budget for the current year, and that's the difference. Okay, so he didn't receive a 50% increase, like some people are trying to say. And that's just not, that, that just didn't happen, okay? We had, we had a group of people that applied for the position and we had a wage range, okay? And the way, when we did our study to figure out what people were getting paid in these city managers, we fell right in that song. And so. That's all I can tell you, I mean, it's just, he didn't get a position raise, it's just, you know, that didn't happen, would never happen. And so I hope everybody can, that's for sure that it didn't happen. As far as the, the library budget goes, okay? The prior year's budget was 151,451. For the current year, it's 158,918, it's an increase of $7,467. The library budget did not get reduced at all, it got increased. Okay, not only that, but we also put $13,000 and some change into, in infrastructure last year. In, in the current year, looks like we're going to have to put a whole bunch more money in there because we've got AC problems that are much larger than what we ever talked about. So don't think that we're trying to close the library, reduce the library, nothing like that, we're going to continue the library, it's an important part of our town. We all know it is and we're going to continue funding it, okay? When it comes to saying that we weren't, there was no public hearings or anything like that. For the, for the budget, October 12, 2025, we had a public hearing on the budget. Nobody was here to speak. August 25th, 2025, we had a second public hearing, nobody was here to speak, okay? So we have plenty of opportunities for people to speak at our meetings about certain items and people don't participate, okay? I can't help that. The meetings are posted on the website, they're either posted as, they've been posted for the beginning of time at City Hall. On the billboard in front of the, the front door. And, and for years, I always had to go to the front door to go see what the day meeting was going to be about, which I'm sure some of you understand that, okay? When it comes to the tourist meetings, October 25th, we got our first meeting. Then September 9th, we got our second meeting. Since September 9th, we got a public hearing, which a lot of people were here for and didn't participate in. September 23rd, we had another meeting, October 24th, another meeting, and tonight, the final meeting. And so to say that we've been quiet about it and not forthcoming, it's been here for months, okay? And so I would hope that people would stop believing the things that are being said about the town in our town, thank you.
No questions?
No.
Ever?
Yes.
The, I want to break down before the library, that included additional capital, we have to work for the computers.
No, we did not. Yes, we also have an additional $5,000 that we did approve after this, like we need to approve for additional computers, so.
And as I told the mayor earlier today, this thing with the air conditioning, we got it going. But unfortunately, the two units are very antiquated, one of them needs to be completely replaced. And by doing that, we're going to have to replace the one that we just repaired, which we paid $6,000. That's additional funds for the library, that's not even in the budget, we just have to come up with somehow. And in replacing them, because they're so antiquated and you can't just replace one or the other, it has to be comparable to each other. So the preliminary estimates are between $25,000 and $30,000 to replace the whole system. That's going to be done, this council is going to have to find a way to support management and how we're going to come up with that money that's not in the budget. So in addition to the amount of money that has already been allocated, an increase for this new fiscal year, we're just going to have to add another $30,000. I mean, I think that is pretty good support for the library. And I am so proud of people like this that do take things seriously and, and, and they, they, I hate to say it, but they're, they're money, but it's, it's very awesome. And they hit the bullet and we're very fortunate.
And all these people up here, we all pay taxes, okay? We all, we all got money in the game, so let's, let's not pretend that we don't.
And we don't worry.
Yeah. We really appreciate my nice comments that, that we received. Item 20, executive session, well, thank you guys for listening to me, I apologize, but. Item 20, executive session, executive process, according to the Meetings Act, and it's authorized by the Executive Government Code regarding any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to section 551.071. Conflictation with town attorney, 551.072 deliberation regarding your property. 551.074 deliberation regarding personnel matters. And 551.087 deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Want to do a special about the deliberation regarding warrants and penalty. Deliberation regarding fire team. And see initial six-month performance evaluation for the city mayor. Does anyone have a motion to go to executive session? Councilmember Perez made the motion, seconded by Councilmember Bryant, to go to executive session.
Councilmember Dr. Ramirez?
Councilmember Perez?
Councilmember Cornejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes, and executive session at? Back to executive session. 7:30. There's nothing to deliberate at, from executive session. I don't think we have any of the city managers, our team tonight, talk a lot about those things.
Yes, I'm going to say, I'm going to eat my tea.
Very good, and let's do a journey. Much better than Councilmember Bryant, so you can have Councilman Cornejo do his journey.
Hold on there. Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Thank you, guys, that is great meeting tonight.